Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission to order. The date is Wednesday, November 3rd, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call. Nick?
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jen Passeretti.
Jeffrey Nekio.
Erin O'Hare, environmental planner.
Okay, we go for the consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of October 6th, 2021. Has anyone got any comments regarding the minutes?
Yes, actually, Mr. Chairman, I have one. It's a typo on page 13.
What'd you say, page 13?
Yeah, page 13. It's the third line. They moved the accessway to avoid the proposed tank. It should be to avoid the propane tank. It's already existing, so...
Propane?
So it that...
Be propane tank?
Yes.
A propane tank. Any other modifications, corrections? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6th, 2021 be accepted as submitted with the correction on page 13.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second. Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Epstein.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going on to the special meeting of October 18th, 2021. This is a special meeting that was held out in the field on Dougherty Drive. Is there any corrections, modifications? If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the special meeting on October 18th, 2021 be accepted as submitted.
Okay, under all business, application A...
Second?
Excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Epstein?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving along. Okay, application A 21-8.27, Dougherty Drive, Ryan Shay. This is where we have the special meeting. Is there any other comments? We pretty well discussed everything out there. So I need a motion on significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 21-8.27, Dougherty Drive, Ryan Shay, installation of the in-ground pool and patio surround and fencing be declared not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Epstein.
Jen?
Yes.
Now, I entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 21-8.27, Dougherty Drive, Ryan Shay, installation of the in-ground pool and patio surround and fencing be approved as submitted.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments. Yeah. Just, the environmental planner's report on this went out October 1st, so in your October packet at that time, the owner wasn't sure if he wanted to move the pool up to his patio, turn it, you know, a little bit this way or that way. Anyway, but as you commented, we were, there was a site investigation, we were out there on October 18th, and I think you felt comfortable with it. I don't know if you want to add some of these. I definitely want to add the erosion control measure stipulation, that that be in and inspected to your approval. May I suggest that? And I don't know if you want to add placards and to indicate that the mowing of the wetlands can continue? That was a question, should it be allowed to continue?
Well, we, I think we agreed to let him put his pool in where it was originally designed.
Right.
So what was on the map? Was the soil erosion controls measures on that map?
Yes, but we always do the standard one where I get to inspect it before they proceed with the excavation of the pool.
Do we want all those conditions of approval then, that you had in your report?
It's up to you. Those, the ones I just mentioned were three of them, and then there's the, just the excavation. I don't think they'll need de-watering, so forget number four. That was if they needed de-watering. I don't think that would come into play.
I don't have those conditions in front of me.
And then number one is just a different design, but he, but he's going to go with the same design, so we don't have to worry about that condition, number one, would submit an approved design. So it would just be two and five, and then if you want placards, that'd be, that's number three.
So it's basically one, two, three, five?
Well, two, two, three, five. If you want the placards, it'd be two, three, five.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a new motion on application A 21-8.27, Dougherty Drive, Ryan Shay, installation of in-ground pool and patio surround and fencing be approved as submitted with the conditions of acceptance on the planner's report of October 1st.
And those approvals are what number?
All right, and the approvals are numbers two, three, and five.
Conditions of approval. Commissioners, okay? Understand the motion? Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in the second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Epstein.
Jen?
Yes.
Thanks. Yes, thank you. Okay, going on, application A 21-9.2475, Williams Road, Scott Calavero.
Just, yeah, just, who's, Mr. Chairman, who's voting tonight?
Well, the new alternate's not voting, so it's the five other members.
Okay, I understand.
Okay? In fact, now that we brought up, will you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, my name's Jeff Nekio. I'm the new alternate to the commission.
Thank you. Okay, all set?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, again, application A 21-9.2475, Williams Road, Scott Calavero, Calavero. This was granted administration approval, so there's not that much, Erin and I went over it. Okay, application A 21-10.11074, South Colony Road, demolition and improvements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take this moment to say that I may need to recuse myself because I am a customer of Cube Smart.
Oh, can I, Mr. Chairman, I did ask the law department their opinion on recusal, and it's always good to go over this for the commission. If somebody is an owner or has some kind of interest in the property or in the application in some way, the Corporation Council felt if Commissioner Phillips was, just had a storage unit, that she's not an owner, so it would be up to her. In other words, it's an ethic, an ethics question, so if anyone at any time feels uncomfortable for any reason regarding the application, it's up to you. It's your personal choice, and if anyone does recuse themselves, which is the proper word, recuse themselves, they can either go into the audience for the duration of the discussion, or they can leave the room, but they're not to vote. That's the key thing, they're not to vote or partake.
But can they stay in their seat?
If they feel comfortable, but I don't, I don't feel that you need to recuse yourself unless, Commissioner Phillips, you feel strongly that you should, then that's up to you. It's a personal choice.
No, no, I'm fine with it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Fine with what?
With staying and voting.
Okay, so you want, you don't want to recuse yourself?
No, no.
You're going to stay?
Yes.
All right. But if someone was to recuse themselves, they don't have to leave the table. They just can't vote or enter the discussion?
Actually, I didn't, I didn't pointedly ask that. I said, do they have to leave the room or go in the audience? I didn't give that choice of sitting, I didn't. So I will find out and report back.
I think many times they do, but I don't, I think this is similar. So you've rented this storage unit, but you go buy gas at a gas station, or you go buy a car wash at a car wash.
Right.
That's got a wetlands application, so. Okay, now that we got that straightened out, you're staying on as a voting member. We have the applicant, okay, applicant in front of us. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
I'm Lachlan, Jim Lachlan, a lawyer here in town with Christopher Giuliano, engineer and surveyor also here in town, on behalf of the applicant, S. Colony Road 1074 LLC. This is an application that would change Zandry's Stillwood Inn, that's now self-storage, into a state-of-the-art...
Pull the mic closer to you.
Got it. ...that would turn Zandry's Stillwood Inn, now self-storage, into a state-of-the-art Cube Smart self-storage, climate-controlled gated, better traffic control, but I've been admonished by this board enough to know that you want to get into the details because this is not a zoning hearing, let's just get down to business. So the details, I'll give you overview, and Christopher will give you much more of the detail that you're looking for.
Just remember, this is a wetlands review you're giving us.
Correct.
We don't need a planning and zoning presentation.
Exactly. Overview, we're going to be cutting back some 16,000 square feet of impervious surface. We're going to be moving structures further back. Wharton Brook runs along the eastern border. There's wetlands back there, steep pitch. We're going to be moving impervious surface and structures further back from the regulated area. We're going to be diverting roof water runoff westward into a grassed area that will provide for better filtration. So the net is less impervious surface, less volume running into the wetland-regulated area, and a better quality water runoff into the Wharton Brook. We've met several times with Erin O'Hare. She's been terrific, providing ideas not only applicable to this, but other future issues that we may approach down the road, and she's been responsive. I like to think that we've been responsive as well. We've, we submitted a revised soil report, we've responded to two different reports, and in the end, Erin has not only been helpful, but also recommended approval with conditions that hopefully you will agree are not unreasonable. Just for bookkeeping purposes, stuff that may not fall into your purview, but I think are worth addressing because Erin and I have discussed them. Christopher is going to be submitting a storm water maintenance plan that will carry forward for maintaining the storm water management for years to come. The Health Department raised issues about the septic system. We will be identifying the septic system, and of course, if necessary, there are changes to the plan because of changes that will be necessary. We'll be back here for modification, but we don't anticipate any such problems, and so that's why we're approaching you now. We have a variance application that soon will be pending. Again, we've been well received by the zoning office. We want to have the building faced this way with the door facing south, but the regs wanted to face this way with the door facing west. Again, if there's problem with our variance application, we'll be back for a modification, but we don't anticipate any problems with that. And then I also spoke with Allison at the engineering department. She has no comments for this forum. She'll be approaching Christopher down the road. We have a zoning hearing coming probably in February. Any concerns that she has, she feels can be addressed through Christopher or through the board at that time. Thank you very much for your time. Erin, thank you very much, and if I can be of any assistance, just let me know, but Christopher's here.
For the record, Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates. I maintain office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. As Attorney Lachlan indicated, we are coming in and basically, Cube Smart is coming in and wants to put a new 30,000-square-foot footprint building on the existing Zandry site. For those that aren't familiar, Zandry's Stillwood Inn is located right here. It used to be a banquet hall, and over the years, various buildings have been built that are non-climate-controlled self-storage. With the pandemic and the economy, things have changed, and Cube Smart came in and is in the process of purchase, or actually has purchased the property, and they're going to make certain renovations to build a new building. So, as far as orientation, South Colony Road, Route 5 is at the bottom of the map, Northfield Road, here at the left side, the main building of Zandry's, and then there are plenty of different outbuildings located throughout the site. FEMA floodplain is this heavy dashed line that runs all along the property. We have steep slope basically from the edge of pavement and fence down to our existing wetlands, which run again north to south, and then we have Wharton Brook even further to the east, running from north to south. So all of the development for this project is going to take place predominantly in this northeast section or quadrant of the property. There's some minor work on the existing building, but that has really nothing to do with wetlands. So what we plan to do in this northeast section is we're going to take out all the existing pavement from the fence westerly, take out these existing storage buildings, couple existing houses, more pavement, and all this gravel area and concrete. So we're going to be pulling all that out and then putting this 30-square-foot footprint building back in. Because there is some grass area, if I did nothing else but just remove the existing impervious and existing structures, we would have had a net increase in impervious surface, but knowing how this commission works, knowing the, see how, you know, to improve a site, I actually talked with the developer about removing some additional pavement. First of all, they don't need all the parking that's associated with a banquet hall when it comes to a self-storage facility, and by providing this area, we're able to actually give you back a grassed upland review area. And just for a point of clarification, the upland review area starts at the top of slope because you have a certain regulation within, certain, yeah, regulation within the whole set of regulations that requires when there is a steep slope from the, from the wetlands, you basically start your upland review area at the top of slope and then come your 50 feet. This gives you a little bit more of an upland review area than is standard. So, so once we demo everything, we're going to be placing the building in this location. This whole area back here will now be grass. We're going to be tying in half of the roof runoff. The southern half will go into our existing drainage system, which discharges behind the former paved area. The northern half of the roof runoff will be discharged down to grade using concrete splash blocks, and we've actually created a swale along this northerly side of the building, so that'll actually be able to run and infiltrate in before entering the wetlands, FEMA floodplain, and eventually Wharton Brook. One of the comments that was raised by the Health Department, and I'll just point it out, is regarding the septic. The existing septic is located in this location right here. We have both a grease trap from the kitchen that was in this building, and we also have our septic tank, and then we have the three manholes where the leaching fields are located. We are more than 150 feet away from Wharton Brook, and our building is actually on the north side of an existing storm drainage line, and there's going to be no basement in this building, so this building will not have any impact on the septic system. There's no bathroom facilities, so I've already spoken with Ms. Batista, who's our town sanitarian, explained that to her, and I have correspondence that I will provide to Erin, basically denoting my conversation with the Health Department and the fact that there should not be an issue with the location of this building and the septic. One of the conditions I anticipate coming from planning with respect to the septic will be that we have to camera it and provide the town with an ASBilt, only because they don't have anything of record because of the age of the system. I don't also anticipate any issues with the septic because, again, that system worked for when they had 100, 200 people in this banquet facility. Now, without all those people, we might have 10 people a day on site, so the septic system is probably well overdesigned for any use that's going on on this property. That's pretty much what we're planning in a nutshell. If there's any specific questions I could answer for any of the commissioners, I would be happy to.
Commissioners, any questions? Jen?
Yeah, my microphone wasn't on, so there was a reason why you couldn't hear me. So, this is, this is self-storage? People are coming and storing their own items or whatever in this, this building here that's on the, in orange?
That is correct. It'll be a climate-controlled self-storage building.
I'm wondering, and I don't know if this question is appropriate now, but I'm wondering if, since it's really kind of close to the wetlands area, if there's any plans for putting signs like no dumping and things like that. Sometimes when people are storing stuff, there's the temptation of like, oh, what are we going to do with this old couch? Oh, here's some nice grassy area, we could just toss it.
I do not believe that the applicant would be opposed to putting signs along the upland review area line, probably along with some placards in that area and do double duty. I see, don't see that as being an issue whatsoever.
I'd make a comment, what, my little bit of knowledge of self-storage, usually they don't throw it outside, they just leave it inside.
Right, right.
And then the owner gets...
But I'm picturing somebody, somebody gets there with their stuff, and, oh, this couch doesn't fit, and I didn't like, I didn't like this couch anyway.
Any other questions? Mike?
No questions.
Debbie?
No questions.
Christopher, is the soil suitable there to put any underground infiltration in there? We talked about running the roof drains off to the east in a grassy area.
Basically, right now, from the existing top of slope west, everything is pretty much pavement, building, gravel. It's all endorphins. Basically, it's been, basically developed, so I'm not sure what exact materials are going to be subsurface, if they use clean fill or construction materials. That I won't know really until they get into this building. As I said, the northern half of the building will flow to the north and then come down this swale. We can, if you think it would be necessary, once this area turns into grass, we can look at putting some of the roof drainage in that area, but as Mr., as Attorney Lachlan already said, we're already decreasing the overall impervious surface by about a third of an acre, so we're reducing flows. We're actually providing cleaner water because of what's coming off the roof. There's going to be less erosion potential, so I'm not opposed to it, I just don't know how practical it would be.
No, I'm not asking you to do it, I'm just concerned about the sandy soils with erosion. If you start messing underground with drainage or roof drains in galleys or whatever, there's going to be some type of a purge in it, but no, what you've designed is fine, I'm not questioning that.
Right, and, and, you know, as I said, the southern half is going to go into the existing system. One of the things I did put in the storm water maintenance document, which I'll give to Erin tonight, is with our, besides, you know, parking lot sweeping, catch basin cleaning, I actually have line items so that the three outlets are actually inspected yearly, and if they notice erosion, first step would be to put rip, you know, rip-rap plunge pools, beef them up. If that doesn't seem to do the work, then put in a check dam. But I noticed, you know, knowing the area, knowing the type of soils, I was concerned about the out, the existing outflows. At least now with a new applicant and now a new maintenance agreement, we have something that we can go back to and make sure that these areas are inspected and taken care of if there's a problem. Thank you.
You got comments, Erin?
Yeah, yeah, back to what we were just talking about, Chris. What three outlets?
There are three existing stormfall outlets coming from the existing drainage on site. They're noted on the survey plan, there's one here, which I'll call the north, second one here is the central, and then there's a third one that I think actually takes some of the road drainage, but I'm not 100% sure on that, here on the south. So there are three existing outfalls that we identified during the survey back in 2019.
All right, so in your, the document you're going to hand in, the storm water maintenance management plan, the responsible party will have to walk down that slope a few times a year to check and see how things are going? Is that what you said?
Yeah, basically, they should check it in the fall, after leaf fall, and they should check it in the spring after snow melt, similar to dealing with the cleaning of the catch basins and the parking lot sweeping.
All right, there's one other thing I, I'd like you to clarify. I don't know why I didn't notice this, but where on these site plans is this northern swale that is going to handle the northern half of the, the new building's roof flow?
Okay.
I didn't see it drawn. Is it drawn on a sheet?
On the sheets that were handed, the site development plans, which are more detailed than what I have here, because these are overall plans, and I thought it would be better for the commission, it would be the site grading and development plans, which I think are sheets, if my memory serves me correct, five and six.
Well...
Within there, the grading along the north side of the building is depicted as a swale, so that the runoff from the downspouts will flow in a west...
Could you show me? I don't see a swale, I see a little bit of grading. I don't know if I'm on the right sheet.
This would be a swale, because I'm cutting into the slope, so this would be a swale going down this way.
Oh.
Very minor, that's all.
Okay, when you said a swale, I thought it was like, you know, four-foot-wide stone or grass thing or...
No, no, no stone. We're just going to do, as I said, a little grading on the north side of the building to promote water to flow in the easterly direction towards the wetlands.
All right, then, okay, then I'm just a little concerned, when you rip up the pavement in the back and put in the grass, which is all great, and now this flow is going to come along, won't it ream out the grass?
No.
In the beginning, before it gets established? Don't we have to put some kind of erosion control in there?
You shouldn't have to. First of all, the root, the runoff coming off the roof falls through the downspout, loses all its energy potential when it hits, gets to the bottom. It then goes into a concrete splash block, that's going to absorb any impact and spread the water out, similar to a level spreader. Then it's going to hit the grass, so you're not going to have flows over like one or two CFS, and grass can handle flows up to about three and a half CFS, so I don't anticipate any issues with water coming off the roof in these downspouts.
I agree, once it gets established, but I'm just saying, right, when you first plant the grass seed, won't it get washed out?
Well, I mean, we do have on the plans, as you noted, we have silt fence. That silt fence won't come out until that area has been established with vegetation and your office is satisfied that everything is under control. If you recall, one of your comments dealt with the silt fence in this corner, and I had to make a, I have to make a correction to that. So we do have silt fence running down the property line and all along the top of slope, so I think we're well protected.
Okay, we can always add some if it's not, but okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioners, any other comments?
No.
For the applicant, are you in agreement with all the conditions of approval on this application?
Yes.
Okay with that, then, I'll entertain a motion, the significant activity...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on application A 21-10.1, 1074 South Colony Road, South Colony 1074 LLC, demolition and... demolition and improvements be declared not a significant activity.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Now entertain a motion to... What's the matter? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A-21-10.1, 1074 South Colony Road, South Colony 1074 LLC, demolition and improvements be approved as submitted with the conditions of approval 1 through 4 on the Environmental Planner's Report of October 29th, 2021.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Jen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right. New applications, Charles Craig on Chimney Hill Road. Okay. Other than that, the schedule for the 2022 regular meeting schedule. It was in our packet. Does anyone have any issues with it? I mean, certainly as we go along through the years, it could change. But basically, this is what we're setting up. We haven't got quite that far yet. What, Erin? No, Erin's looking at me chomping at the bit.
No, I'm just saying, August 3rd. I noticed August 3rd.
What's August 3rd?
Well, do we want to keep? I noticed my secretary put in August 3rd.
Oh, we usually, so some, well, then this is incorrect. And if you're going to do a July, late July and later August, what are we doing? Eliminate July 6th?
Well, that's what we usually talk about at the meeting. Like, do we want a July, the middle of July, the third week in July? We kind of kicked that around a little bit. And let's eliminate August.
Well... What are the, it's pretty hard for us to get it out. What do the commissioners want to do? Skip the July meeting or make a combined July-August meeting? Let's go to the commission.
Let's combine it.
Let's combine it. So let's, now, we're going to, what'd be the end of? The end of July? Okay. You've got, of course, if you're into August, you want to eliminate, you've got a July 6th. So you either have something like July 27th, and that puts a five-week stretch in August, something like that. Want to make it July 27th? July 27th instead of July 6th in August, or July 27th? Okay? So that'll give us 11 meetings for the month, for the year. Everybody in agreement with the other dates? I'll entertain a motion to approve the schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission meeting scheduled for 2022.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Under reports and discussion, of course, I'm always curious about Farm Hill. Anything changed on that?
I haven't, I'm directed to write a memo. I have not yet, I mean, not a memo, letters to the four property owners. I have not done that yet. And do you want me to talk about the Choat?
About what?
About Choat's stream downstream from here.
Choat?
Choat.
Choats?
Yes, Choat. Downstream from here.
They cleaned out in front of the culvert.
Yes. And they've started their construction on that, I think it's eight lot, eight houses, faculty housing. That started about two weeks ago. And they did mow that meadow right up to the stream. And it, I mean, literally up to the channel, stream channel. And it did help a little bit with the flow. And they only mowed it on their property, of course.
Okay. All right. Contact sheet. We have the contact sheet. I think, oh, Jeff is on here. That's good.
Yes.
Very good, Jeff. Okay. I'm going to save four for a moment. Kackiwack, meaning State of Connecticut Health Inland Wetlands. All right. Getting back to violations. Now, you, there was a letter here on the desk when we came in. It talked about the violation remains on 1245 Old Colony?
Yes. We, last meeting, we, I asked the commission to consider voting that the violation remains. And you voted, so the violation remains. We need to keep that in effect. We don't want it to lapse in perception if nothing else. So we voted that it remains in place. So then, when I was writing him, the owner, that notice violation letter, I beefed it up, as you can see in what I handed out. And I'm pushing to schedule a meeting to get this rolling again with the planning department. Now that we have a new planner who's firmly installed, it's really the planning taking the lead. In other words, we could ask him to get his illegal road out of there, the dirt road. But that dirt road is critical to be used to haul out all the material, the tremendous amount of material that he put in the floodplain that's not in our jurisdiction, that's in planning and zoning's jurisdiction. That was the holdup. So I hope we can move forward with that. Of course, with the winter, typically, we don't do this kind of work in the winter. So, but at least we could get the plan meeting on the remediation plan.
It'll take you, it'll take you a long time to get that resolved and get them to agree, I think.
Well, we will see.
Okay. Violation, violation, South Colony Street. If, you'll be checking on that, I'm sure, when Cube Smart gets going.
Okay.
Northfield Road, that's, you're right there in the same area.
I checked that the other day. There's no news on that. No. He hasn't, he stopped all improvement. He was going to, you know, rebuild the home there, and he just stopped.
I would guess that he is extremely busy paving, driving.
Oh, probably, yeah. Maybe that's it.
Okay. Trumbull Drive, Jill Corbin, that's still in process?
Yes. It's, and we reaffirmed that notice violation last time. The grass is growing in. But I personally would like that violation to stay in place and through the winter. Let's hope it does good through the winter. But so far, so good.
Okay. 1468 Tuttle Avenue. This still a violation because of what?
Just to get the placards that we talked about and to get that pool finished. Their pool isn't finished. I mean, they put the pool in, but the grading around it is not finished.
But that's not, that's not a violation, is it?
No.
You ought to get, you ought to get the thing so we get it cleaned up. If it's a simple, like placards.
I think by next month, perhaps, I will call them and maybe we can get that all done.
Let's get it off the sheet.
Yes.
Okay. And 33 Summerwood Drive.
Okay. This one I would like to report on a little bit. I was going to hand out something to all of you, but I just have a draft. I'd like to pass it around with pictures. Pictures tell a thousand words. All right. So I got a call from a guy in the neighborhood who says, "This house is tracking dirt all the way down the road." So I was out looking at other properties. So I said, "I'll swing by, see what's going on." Well, what was going on is these people at a contractor removing a tremendous amount of dirt from their rear yard. I estimated 700 cubic yards. They, I said to them, they were home. I said, "Why are you doing this?" First off, you need lots of permits, but why are you doing this? And they said, "Well, we've lived here for several years, and we want a backyard. We have a hill. So we decided to get rid of the hill so we'd have a nice backyard." Well, there's a way to do that. You need to fill an excavation permit from planning and zoning, and you need to build a 14-foot retaining wall, which was their intent. You need an engineered plan so that the building department can approve your retaining wall. Anyway, that wasn't happening, and the sediment was coming out of the place every time it rained. Well, first off, even when it wasn't raining, when the trucks were tracking it down the road. But then when it rained, of course, it's pouring down their driveway. At first, the contractor cooperated. He put in some hay bales. But then both he didn't cooperate in, and I believe he's been dismissed from the situation. So this letter that I drafted goes through the steps. The planning department issued their notice of violation on it right away. The owners didn't take any action yet to file for a fill-in excavation permit. They need an engineered plan to do that. So, you know, you just don't turn around and do it the next day. You need to have an engineer working with you. And then, then I guess it was the 29th, what was that, Friday? The town engineer issued a notice of violation, which was news. Turns out, and I have a copy of it, and the next time I'll give you in the next packet, copy of the, I want everyone to have this stormwater ordinance. Turns out, two years ago, in 2018, the town passed a new, they amended a town ordinance regarding stormwater. And turns out, you can get fined. And the copy of the ordinance is there, and it gives, I don't remember the fines, but it's X amount of dollars a day for introducing sediment into the town's storm sewer system. Now, I have photographs. It was just pouring in. It's just pouring in. And what I had the engineering department do for me on the last page of that handout is follow it. When it goes into the catch basins on Summerwood Drive, then it goes to the east, and it goes down the hill in the woods into a stream. And that stream goes under Cook Hill Road to the Oakdale property, where we've had a lot of problems anyway with old trees and everything getting washed out in floods. And then it goes under South Turnpike Road by Adams Landing, which the commission worked on, that Adams Landing property, which is 76-90 South Turnpike Road. And goes under there. That's where we had the developer build a compensatory flood storage area. And then it goes under the Wilbur Cross to the Quinnipiac River. So the point is, when we work with construction sites, you know, of course, it's a violation if the contractor or the developer gets sediment into the wetland next door or the stream right there on the property. But what about if it goes off-site? That dirt's going somewhere. And this is just an example of how far dirt can go and the damage downstream, which you don't see, you know, you don't see. Somebody had to track it, and that's why I had the engineering department track the root of this sediment that's ending up in that stream in wetland down below. Anyway, so I did chat with Chairman Vitale on it and that he felt a letter, a letter to the owners would be in order. Obviously, they're under violations from the two other departments.
Okay. All right, good. Okay. Now, going back to four, number four on the reports and communication. I think Erin wants to make a presentation regarding some property, 95 and 1/4 acres in the watershed land area of McKenzie Reservoir.
All right. This, what the chairman just mentioned, that went out in the packet Friday night. My environmental planners' report synopsis with a letter attached to it from Neil Amwick, who's the general manager of the Water and Sewer Division. It was addressed to the mayor regarding this particular piece of property, which is 264 Williams Road. It's in, this property is entirely in the watershed of the McKenzie reservoir. It actually, when the water, when the muddy river traverses this property, it goes 2,500 feet directly into the north end of McKenzie reservoir. It's what's called a Class 1. It's predominantly, almost entirely, Class 1 water company land. That was with direct drainage into the muddy river, which is a primary trajectory to a public drinking water supply reservoir. So it's very valuable in terms of water quality, protection of the water quality. Of course, there's other reasons to protect the property. And we, the various departments have been working to apply for a grant. To the, right now, there's an open space and water company land acquisition grant. Deadline is November 19th under the DEP. And we're working to apply under that grant to get grant money for this project. But tonight, at the PUC meeting, this, the Water Division is making a presentation to the PUC to go ahead and buy this property because they feel so strongly that this is a key piece to get for the future protection of the water supply. So in that vein, looking ahead at submitting the grant application, it would be great to have a letter of support from this commission. And as I put in, I'll read the last sentence, if I may. "The support of the commission is sought for the purchase of this Class 2, I'm sorry, for this Class 1 and Class 2 property at 264 Williams Road from the perspective of protection of the public drinking water supply, water quality, and the preservation of the river system and associated wetlands." It's a 108-acre property total. The owners, which are the Stephens, they want to hold back 13.1 acres. So the actual acquisition property is 95.2 acres, roughly. This is diverse terrain. It's got a wet meadow. It's got your muddy river. It's got a floodplain, FEMA floodplain, FEMA floodway. Then it rises up, the grade rises up to, it's a ridge, trap rock ridge, and it has tailless slope. It has a 15-acre swamp in the middle of this thing with its own stream that outlets into the muddy river. From the, it's so scenic down below, looking up at the ridge. And of course, from the top of the ridge, you can see all around. There are some existing trails on the property, and the Conservation Commission would like to add a trail through the front.
Okay. So even though we haven't been out there, we can surmise the value of this piece of property in protecting our drinking water supply. Muddy rivers, also, we worked very hard at the, starting up at the Bristol Myers and the Research Parkway area. And this is the same muddy river that we're going to protect down at the bottom. It's probably a perfect location for it to help to get biofiltration before it gets into the McKenzie. So we haven't been out there, as I say, but the concept and the property and the fact that it's certainly, it's, it has the potential to be sold for houses of some sort. That, I wanted Erin to put this small presentation together so the group would have an understanding of the property. So unless there is some reason why we shouldn't have Erin draft a letter that we support the purchase of this property, then I think we should go ahead. Does anybody have any reason not to support the purchase of this property? I mean, it's certainly going to be some Wallingford's tax dollars, and I'm sure with the grants that are hopefully available. There seems to be more, there seems to be grants available, not only for open space, but there's probably a greater percentage associated with drinking water supply grants. So I think we should probably take advantage of it.
Where does this, in relation to the concrete dusting guy? Just across the street? Plambo, Plamo?
No, 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 way, way.
Way from this?
This is Shelton Williams's farm. It's almost on the corner of Liney Hall Lane.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It's where the road bends. It's not Airline Road. It's, I'm sorry, the next one out by the reservoir.
So it's further north than, than... So it's further north than Center Street?
More east.
East?
Yeah. All right. Yep. Yeah, he was the old farmer. In fact, I was told in my youth that this is where the original town farm was, the Holmes area. Horace Shelton Williams was the owner of this farm. Oscar Williams had the farm next door. But I was led to believe that this is where the original town farm was, and then it got over on the other side of town. Anyway, if not, I'll entertain a motion to support this purchase and have Aaron draft a letter to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that Aaron O'Hare be, to draft a letter of support for the purchase of the watershed area, Class 1 and Class 2 watershed land, the acreage on 264 Williams Road.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made, any discussion? Offer a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Good. Yes. Good. I think that wraps up our meeting for tonight. Is there anything else to come before the commission?
Hold on just a second.
Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.